Order at six thirty P M. Ms. Rose Naya, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. Travis?
Here.
Mrs. Crawford?
Here.
All right. And if any, um, if you are able and willing, can you all please stand for the question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, it looks like we do have a dendum. Um, to add to the agenda tonight, um, item H, action item personnel resolve that the Twins Board, Board of Education adds the following recommendations for employment to, as noted below, H one, certified staff recommendations Kathleen Yates, um, teacher R B C, and then H two, classified staff recommendations, um, Ariel Durgen and Kizzy Frederick. Then the next thing is item action, new business resolved with the Twins Board of Education adds the following action item, a new business as noted below. Um, twenty-six is a, um, revised job description for the administrative assistant for the high school athletic department, resolved that the Twins Board of Education approves the revised job description for the administrative assistant, high school athletic office, as sent to the board under separate cover. And then number twenty-seven is agreement with Beachbrook for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, resolved that the Twins Board of Education approves the agreement with Beachbrook at, um, Granger Road in Garfield Heights from July first, twenty-twenty-five through June thirty of twenty-twenty-six to provide services to meet selected social emotional needs of at-risk and behavior-challenged students at a cost of four thousand fifty-nine dollars and forty, four hundred, four hundred fifty-nine thousand, four hundred five dollars, as sent to the board under separate cover. This is student wellness fund and, um, general fund expenditure. And then the other addendum is to resolve that the Twins Board of Education renumbers the following resolutions, I twenty-eight for public hearing for rehiring retired teacher Edward Liphnos, and I twenty-nine, public hearing for rehiring retired administration Mark Bendis. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Egan, second by Mrs. Hamilton. Ms. Rose Naya, can, any discussion?
Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. Travis?
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes.
All right, and that motion passes to add those to the agenda. All right. All right, so good evening, um, community, family, and friends. Um, as we gather, um, this June, I want to take a moment to recognize two important observations, Juneteenth and Pride Month. We are proud to acknowledge these celebrations because they represent the values we hold dear as a school community, freedom, inclusion, and ongoing work to ensure that every student and family feel seen, valued, and supported. While we did not have formal district-wide celebrations, I hope many of you were able to participate in local events or take time to reflect on the meaning of these important milestones. Together, we continue to foster a culture where all individuals are respected and embraced for who they are. Also wanted to congratulate our Tiger Track athletes and coaches. Earlier this month, several of the Twinsburg High School Track athletes proudly represented our district at the O H S A A Track and Field State Tournament at the Jesse Owens Memorial Stadium. Um, they were competing against the very best in Ohio, and we did have some Tigers who delivered outstanding performances. Um, we had numerous, um, students who were there where Sam finished sixteenth place at four hundred meters, Nicole, um, Smith finished eighth place at three hundred meters hurdle with a new school record of forty-three eighty-five, Autumn finished thirteenth place with eight hundred meters, Sam Hop fifth place with eight hundred meters, and, um, Nicole, Autumn, Brooke, and Taylor all, um, got into, um, they finished fifth place with the four-by-four meter relay, uh, with the alternatives Lexi and Sydney, and Sam Isaiah, um, Stephen and, um, another Sam, um, placed seventh place, um, with the four-by-four relay with the new school record of, um, three point seventeen point fifty-six, and the alternatives was, um, Andrew and Ryan. So we are so proud of the students, um, for their hard work and dedication, and we also want to do a special thank you to the staff, um, who was outstanding, um, head coaches, Kement and, um, Bird, assistant coaches Roger, Real Garrett, Chriswell, Gus Chriswell, Chuck Glover, and Lorenzo Harris, and then also, um, a special thanks to our athletic director, Mr. Brian Fantone, for his leadership, and then also a special thank you to Mr. Joshua Harris for capturing amazing photos from the event. Also did want to let, um, families know that right now through our summer, um, there is a summer meal program offered to any families in our district. Um, it is through the Twinsburg Library, um, Public Library, and this partnership is with, um, the Children's Hunger Alliance. Um, they are providing a valuable resource for our families this summer. Every week, um, families can receive five days' worth of lunches for their children, and no questions will be asked, and it's on a first-come, first-served basis. The locations where you can get your lunches from is Mount Olive Baptist Church, um, in Twinsburg Township, um, Heritage Hall in Reminderville, and then Twinsburg Public Library. So definitely go on our website, the dates and times are listed, um, for you to get that information, and we want to thank all the businesses, families, and community partners who our generous support makes this possible for our students in our district. Also didn't want to remind everyone that right now on our website, there is a summer reading list as well as a school supply list for the upcoming school year, so this is a great way for you to stay engaged with your students and prepare for August. And then on behalf of the board, we want to wish all the families, staff, and students a safe, relaxing, and enjoyable summer break. We look forward to welcome everyone back soon for another great year. And that ends my president's report. Awesome. Good evening, Mrs. Crawford, Board of Education, families who are here tonight, staff members, and those joining us from the community. Um, you know, Board of Education, uh, this week, by the end of this week, our principal's filing on vacation. So although, um, most of the staff and our students have been gone since the end of May, our principals have been rolling up their sleeves and working hard, especially with the hiring that's being done, uh, this summer. So we wish our administrative team the best luck of a wonderfully relaxing summer, and we look forward to seeing everybody back at the end of July, um, as far as administrators go, not everybody else. Boys and girls, you've got some more time. Um, anyway, so, uh, Board, earlier today, I stopped at Wilcox Primary School, and the Summit County Sheriff's Office is there this week doing Safety City with our little Tigers, and I just want to give a shout out to our friends at the Summit County, um, Sheriff's Office. Uh, what a great program. Uh, I captured some photos there on my, um, X account, if you are interested in looking at it. We have about ninety little ones there, and there are about twenty-five high school students serving as mentors. So it is a wonderful space and place. Um, kids are learning a lot of great safety tips, and, um, just kudos to, um, Deputy Beers and the rest of the deputies from Summit County Sheriff's Office. They're doing a great job and really engaging with the kids. They were singing there this morning with motions. It was just a lot of fun. Um, Board of Education, as you know, we continue to monitor the state budget bill. It is moving along, and we had some news today, so, uh, please, uh, stay tuned for, uh, the finality of that will be when Governor Dewine signs the bill, but I believe his deadline is June thirtieth. So, um, and of greater concern even of that is House Bill three thirty-five, and so thank you for those family members and staff members, Board of Education members, staff members who have reached out, uh, to our legislators. Um, if it stays as proposed, it will have catastrophic impact on our school district, and, uh, it is really, really very, um, alarming. And so we continue to monitor what is happening, um, in Columbus with the budget bill and with other bills that will impact the school district, and as things become finalized, Board, of course, we will inform our families, our, our parents, our staff members, and of course you, um, to make sure that everybody is in the loop. Uh, and again, thank you for everyone who's reached out in advocacy on behalf of our school district. I know that the legislators are receiving phone calls and letters and emails from you because I have heard from aides in Columbus telling me as such, and, um, they have been impressed, uh, by the number of folks who have responded to our call for advocacy, so that's, that's great news. Um, finally, Board of Education, I just want to say a word about our registration process. Our district registrar is Mrs. Robin Babinek, and her office is out of the Board of Education office. It's been a very busy couple of weeks and continues to be so, uh, through the rest of the summer as we prepare for the first days of school. So if you happen to be a family new to our community, or if you have a student, um, you, you need to register for school, please go to the district website, um, visit the four-parents dropdown, and then from there you can click on the registration and enrollment link, uh, for our new students. Once you're there, you can begin the registration process and actually select a scheduling time to meet with Mrs. Babinek to fa- finalize your registration for the coming school year. Um, she can be reached at the Board of Education office at three-three-zero-four-eight-six-two-thousand. And, uh, Board of Education, that concludes my report for this evening. Thank you. Do we have any remarks? All right. Um, number one, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the appropriations resolution for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five as presented to the board under separate cover. Two, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the proposed temporary budget appropriations resolution for F-one twenty-twenty-six as presented to the board under separate cover. Three, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following fund-to-fund transfers, eight thousand fifty-nine dollars and four cents from District Agency O H S A A Fund zero-two-two to General Fund zero-zero-one. And number four, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the agreement with K twelve Consulting Incorporated, P O Box four-seven-six, New Albany, Ohio, four-three-zero-five-four, for the five-year forecast during fiscal year twenty-twenty-six, not to exceed seventy-nine-hundred dollars in additional travel expenses if as needed. This is a general funds expense per the attached exhibit. Do I have a motion? So moved by Mrs. Hamilton, second by Mrs. Travis. Any discussion? Ms. Rose Naya, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. Travis?
Yes.
Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes.
And that motion passes for zero. H one, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the certified licensed personnel under contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibits as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions as per, uh, pending satisfactory O R C background checks. Two, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the classified personnel under contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory O R C background checks. And three, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the supplement contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory O R C background checks. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Egan?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hamilton. Any discussion? Ms. Rose Naya, can you please call the roll?
Maybe I may, I'll just make a quick call. Now, um, I would like to welcome everyone to our district. At last month, we were celebrating those that are leaving, and this month, we are starting to welcome our new staff members, and one of those members happens to be, um, on my team, so we would like to welcome Michelle. Um, she's got some big shoes to fill with the blazing heels, so, um, and again, as well, every other member who's here, um, looks forward to starting a new and exciting school year with us. We're excited to help them out.
Thank you. Yes, and also, um, there is, um, Barry Elsman, who has been with the district for fourteen years, who is going to be retiring, so congratulations on her retirement. You'll definitely be missed in our district, and then we, um, do have a couple other people, um, who will be leaving the district who will, um, miss as well, Daven Dove, Kelly Lacoma, and Sarah Marcus, Marquise. So thank you for your services with Twinsburg, and we wish you success in your future endeavors. And welcome to our new hires. You can call the roll.
This is great. Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. Travis?
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes.
And that motion passes for zero. Item I, I'll read one through twenty-six, wait, one through twenty-five, um, twenty-six. All right, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the agreement with Crockett Physical Therapy, um, in Macedonia to provide physical therapy services for Twinsburg City School District students who qualify for services during the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Um, total cost for the year shall not exceed a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, and is a general fund expenditure as sent to the board under separate cover. Two, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the agreement with Tongue G U S L O C in Independence for, as needed, translating and inter, um, interpreting services for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as sent to the board under separate cover. This is a general fund expenditure. Three, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the agreement with L L A Therapy Pride, speech Twinsburg City School District students attending education alternatives during the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Professional services will be built per the following scheduled fees. Speech and language pathologies at eighty-one ninety-three an hour, occupational therapists eighty-one ninety-three an hour, occupational therapist assistant fifty-six eighty an hour, physical therapists eighty-one ninety-three an hour, physical therapist assistant fifty-six eighty an hour, as sent to the board under separate cover. This is a general fund expenditure. Four, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the agreement with Sundaro Therapies Incorporated in Northville, Ohio, to provide occupational therapy services during the twenty-five, twenty-six school year to qualifying students. Total cost of, for the year shall not exceed two-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand-five-hundred dollars. This is a general fund expenditure as sent to the board under separate cover. Five, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves additional services, extended school year E U S Y, for one student attending welfare Jewish children's Bureau Maya Monarch School for the twenty-fourth, twenty-five school year. Is it the twenty-four, twenty-five, or is this twenty-five, twenty-seven?
It's this year still.
Okay, so this year, okay. Total cost will be eight thousand one-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars. This is a general fund expenditure as sent to the board under separate cover. Six, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the behavioral services agreement with A V A Outreach Services in Independence, Ohio, to provide behavioral services upon request of the district for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, per the agreement set to the board under separate cover. Total cost is not to exceed three-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty dollars. This is both a V I P fund and a general fund expenditures. V I B fund, I should say, not V. Sorry. Um, number seven, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the placement contract with the Kids Link School LLC in Streetsboro, Ohio, for one student to attend from September first, twenty-twenty-five through August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six, per the Kids Link School calendar. Total tuition cost is ninety-nine-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. This is a general fund expense as sent to the board under separate cover. Eight, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the placement contract with the Kids Link School LLC in Streetsboro, Ohio, for one student to attend from September first, twenty-twenty-five through August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six, for the Kids Link School calendar. Total cost is ninety-eight thou- thousand dollars. This is a general fund expense as sent to the board under separate cover. Nine, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the contract for professional service with the Steps Educational Group, Inparma, Ohio, for one student to attend Steps Academy for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, and the E S Y program from June twenty-nine, twenty-six through July twenty-fourth, twenty-six. Total tuition cost is eighty-five thousand dollars. This is a general fund expenditure as sent to the board under separate cover. Ten, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the career exploration course of study for R B Chamberlain Middle School. The adoption was approved by the District Curriculum Technology Committee on June second, twenty-twenty-five, as sent to the board under separate cover. Eleven, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the sports officiating course of study for Twinsburg High School. The adoption was approved by the District Curriculum and Technology Committee on June second, twenty-twenty-five, as sent to the board under separate cover. Twelve, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the purchase of the district-wide internet filter in monitoring from C D W G in Chicago, Illinois, for nineteen-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty dollars. This is a general fund expense as sent to the board under separate cover. Thirteen, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the settlement agreement, release and waiver for tuitionship expenses for one student to attend Lawrence School for the twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. The Twinsburg City School District will pay the standard annual tuition charges of thirty-nine, thirty-six-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, per the conditions outlined in the agreement, as sent to the board under separate cover. This is a general fund expenditure. Four, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the attached listing of books to be lea- to be deleted from inventory. Fifteen, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following listing of technology equipment to be deleted from inventory. Sixteen, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following police officers to provide security at events for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as needed at a rate of fifty dollars an hour. Seventeen, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following police officers as substitute S R Ls for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as needed at a rate of fifty dollars an hour. Eighteen, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the commercial insurance rates for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year through the Ohio School Plan in Highland in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars for the commercial package coverage, property liability, fleet violence, and pollution, and cyber insurance with the T M H C C, and travelers for thirteen-thousand-thirty-three dollars for a total of two-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars as sent to the board under separate cover. This is a general funds expenditure. Nineteen, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the contract for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year for A L Safe Transportation in Aurora, Ohio, for select special education and homeless routes pursuant to the terms and conditions set forth in the contract as sent to the board under separate cover. This is a general funds expenditure. Twenty, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the contract for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year with educational alternatives in Brook Park, Ohio, for as-needed transportation services for select special education and homeless routes pursuant to the terms and conditions set forth in the contract sent to the board under separate cover. This is a general funds expenditure. Twenty-one, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the contract for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year with Palmer Express D B A Willow Transportation in Eastlake, Ohio, for as-needed transportation services for extracurricular events pursuant to the terms and conditions set forth in the contract sent to the board under separate cover. This is a general funds expenditure. Twenty-two, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the twenty-five, twenty-six data access agreement with Summit Education Initiative, S E I, in Afrin, Ohio, regarding data sharing for research and reporting to improve instruction and educational outcomes, as sent to the board under separate cover. Twenty-three, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the E M I, E M A Shared Services Agreement with Neonet in Cuyahoga Falls to provide E M A support as denoted in the agreement and statement of work proposal at a monthly cost not to exceed four-thousand-seven-hundred dollars from July first, twenty-twenty-five through July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, and renewable on a monthly basis unless otherwise terminated by the district. This is a general fund expenditure as sent to the board under separate cover. Twenty-four, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the settlement agreement, release and waiver for tuition expenses for one student to attend Lawrence School for the twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-six, twenty-seven school years. Twinsburg City School District will pay the tuition cost of seventy-three thousand, along with transportation costs for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, per the conditions outlined in the agreement, as sent to the board under separate cover. This is a general fund expenditure. Twenty-five, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the quote for the Summit County Sheriff's Office to provide a school resource officer to Samuel Bissell Elementary School for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year at hourly rate of forty-five dollars and, um, in insurance retention hourly fee of six dollars for a total of fifty-one dollars per hour. Deputy, Deputy Bill Lee will be assigned as the school resource officer at Samuel Bissell Elementary School for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as sent to the board under separate cover. Twenty-six, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the revised job description for the administrative assistant H R Athletic Office as sent to the board under separate cover. And twenty-seven, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the agreement with Beachbrook, um, in Garfield, Ohio, from July first to twenty-five to June twenty-six, June thirty of twenty-six, provide services to meet social emotional needs of at-risk and behavior-challenged students at a cost of four-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand-four-hundred-and-five dollars as sent to the board under separate cover. This is a student wellness fund and general fund expenditure. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Travis?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hamilton. Any discussion?
Um, just want to remind everyone, the, um, Technology Curriculum and Technology Committee meeting is what we spoke to the last, at the last meeting, and I misspoke because it's on this time for the agenda. That was the first read there of my announcement, but the, um, career exploration course is going to be at R B Chamberlain, will be, um, part of the curriculum from the state now, hoping that students become much more aware in all of the technical, uh, opportunities that there are beyond college and involving college, but can also be towards the, um, career, um, fields. And the sports officiating course at the high school, um, Erin Rich will be running that, and the students will learn actually how to effectively officiate. I believe that she's looking at basketball for sure, uh, possibly another sport or two, but if she times it correctly, according to what we're seeing, uh, they may actually be able to officiate games in the winter and earn some money, and also there'll be an element of, of, um, community give-back in the program to do some things, um, to just be kind to our community and, and offering back. So both of those are excellent additions to our, um, curriculum in the district.
Yes, thank you. Any other discussion? All right, Ms. Rose Naya, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Travis?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes, and that motion, uh, passes for zero. Twenty-six, um, oh, now twenty-eight, resolve that, um, I'm sorry. As per the Ohio Revised Code, Section three-three-zero-seven-point-three-five-three, the Twinsburg Board of Education resolves that this is a public hearing on the issue of the reemployment of Edward Liphnos by the Board of Education of the Twinsburg City School District. Members of the public are invited to provide input to the board on the issue of Edward Liphnos reemployment with the board following his retired, retirement. Speakers are limited to five minutes each, and all public comment will be closed after thirty minutes. A sign-up sheet will be used if necessary to determine the order in which persons will address the board. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by, was it Miss Egan first, and second by Mrs. Hamilton? Any discussion?
Mrs. Crawford, if I can just explain, uh, we have a young one in the audience working on his merit badge, and this is a kind of a learning moment. So, Mr. Liphnos is a middle school teacher, and he's just, as you know him, okay, and he's, he retired at the end of last school year. He would like to come back to teach for us next year, but in order for him to be able to do that, um, the board had to do a couple different things. The first thing they had to do is they had to put a notice in the Akron Beacon Journal to say that this meeting was going to be held tonight, um, for this, the purpose of this public hearing. Um, anybody in the community who wanted to come and talk about Mr. Liphnos's qualifications, and whether or not they thought it's a good idea for him to be rehired as a retiree could have come tonight. So is that why you're here tonight? No. Okay, and so, um,
We're just observing.
Yeah, so this gives the public an opportunity. If they had an opinion about Mr. Liphnos, they could come tonight. Now, Mr. Liphnos is not receiving a contract this evening that would be up for board consideration at the next board meeting on July sixteenth. So if you're a retired educator, you can't automatically be rehired. You have to wait a, a couple of months, actually, allow the public to provide input, and then the Board of Education can consider whether or not they would like to reemploy Mr. Liphnos as a teacher at the middle school for next year.
Do I have to? So, anybody want to? Well, there isn't anybody here. There's no one here, so we're good. Okay, right. All right, Ms. Rose Naya, can you call the roll?
Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamilton?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Travis?
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes. Right, and that passes four-zero. Item twenty-nine, as per Ohio Revised Code Section three-three-zero-seven-point-three-five-three, the Twinsburg Board of Education resolves that this is a public hearing on the issue of the reemployment of Mark Bendis by the Board of Education of the Twinsburg City School District. Members of the public are invited to provide input to the Board on the issue of Mark Bendis' reemployment with the Board following his retirement. Speakers are limited to five minutes each, and all public comment will be closed after thirty minutes. A sign-up sheet will be used if necessary to determine the order in which persons will address the Board. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Travis?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Egan. Any discussion? All right, Ms. Rosnaya, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Travis?
Yes.
Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes. And that motion passes four-zero. All right, any miscellaneous?
I just want to add, Mrs. Powers mentioned the Safety City. The children had, beyond, Mrs. Powers, when you were there, the fire trucks allowed the students to enjoy, first of all, sitting in fire trucks, but they also enjoyed a little summer spraying, water spraying. I noticed also, I was there to pick up one of the volunteers from the high school, and the children were all coming out wet. Parents were all coming to pick them up with beach towels, and they were the happiest little people that you ever want to meet today. They were smiling and giggling and laughing all the way from the exit door to their cars with their parents. So it's, I agree, the sheriffs have done a wonderful job this week with the, with the children, and they're, they're just having a blast. So we really want to thank Summit County Sheriff's Department for the work that they're doing with our little people.
In Twinsburg Fire.
In Twinsburg Fire, oh, yeah, fire hoses. They got to sit in the truck and hold the steering wheels, and I, it was, it was just an absolutely awesome time for the little ones.
It was a perfect day.
Perfect day for it.
Any other discussion?
One thing I forgot to mention, Mrs. Crawford, when we were doing the Personnel Items, on the agenda this evening is a recommendation for our new varsity head soccer boys coach, Mr. Chase Bettinson. We invited him to be here this evening. He and his wife are at Hamilton downtown, so he could not come tonight. He had his date night with his wife. But we will send a media release out tomorrow morning. He is delighted and so excited about leading the boys team. He was a member of Coach Lally's soccer program when he was a student. Graduated here from the high school in two thousand and fourteen. Was a very successful student, very successful soccer player himself. Went on to play Division One Soccer, I believe, at Bowling Green State University, and is coming home. He has been our assistant head coach for about seven years, and now he's going to take the helm of the program. Super excited, is just amazingly humble for the opportunity, and we look forward to him taking our boys soccer program to the next level. So congratulations to Chase Bettinson for your approval this evening.
Yes, that's very exciting. I mean, he is a great teacher as well. He was my son's teacher this year. And so we're glad to have our own coaching, so that's exciting. Anything else? All right, executive session. There is a need for executive session, so the Board of Education will enter into executive session at seven oh-four P.M. to discuss employment, discipline, and compensation of public employees as per the Board Policy Number zero-one-six-six-eight. Thank you for calling, good luck.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Bye. And do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Miss Egan, second, second by Mrs. Travis. Any discussion? Ms. Rosnaya, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Mrs. Travis?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes.
All right, so the Board is now into executive session. I do not see a need for us to agree here, so have a good night. Thank you.